Well, hello, welcome, everybody. I'm Erica Brown. I'm the editor of the Manchester Cricket. Thank you for joining us today for the 2022 Meet the Candidate Forum. And we're doing this in partnership with 1623 Studios. This is going to be aired on 1623 next week on Channel 12, and it's going to be pushed out on social media, and it's going to be on the cricket.com. So this will make its way to other people and the world at large. But for now, we have a nice audience. And here we have the three candidates for one of the two contested races in Manchester. The other one is the school committee. This one is the select board, Board of Selectmen, as it was before town meeting. So in alphabetical order, we have Catherine Bellata, we have Jeff Bodmer Turner, and we have Brian Solacey. Thank you for coming, guys. So I'm happy that we're going to be here to hear a little more about them. You get to learn about them. You get to learn about your issues. We're going to start off with a moderated Q and A with the candidates, one at a time, in a more ordered fashion. And then we're going to switch to questions from the audience, which you're free to ask. Just raise your hand, and I'll find my way over to you with my microphone, and you can ask your questions. So let's get started. We'll start alphabetically, and then we'll mix it up. So alphabetically, let's start. Catherine Bellata, we'll start with you. If you could have sort of a quick introduction, and then if you could, each one of you name three things or just anything that was triggered your reason for running, so that we can have a little bit more of a dimensionalized introduction to you.
Thank you, Erica. So first, I like to be called Kathy. So I'm Kathy Bellata. And two years ago, I retired from my 32-year career at Raytheon Company. I was an information technology and strategy executive. And it was at the height of the pandemic. It was just beginning. So I had a lot of free time. And I literally just started listening in on the Zoom Board of Selectmen meetings, some of the planning board meetings. And that extra time I had afforded me an opportunity to really learn about the challenges and opportunities facing Manchester. And I quickly realized that I have some professional skill sets that I think would be very helpful to the town. I have a lot of experience with managing large multimillion-dollar strategic programs, large organizations, financially complex organizations, and strategic planning. And I would, my reason for running is I'd just like to jump in there and help. Some of the top issues that are certainly top of mind here are the budget pressures. There is just no shortage of a perfect storm coming at us with regard to demands on our funding. Also, the affordable housing and the variety of housing that we desire as articulated in the master plan. But we also want to maintain the small character of the town, so that conundrum that we're in. And, you know, I also believe a comprehensive approach to climate change. I would like to see that as part of our, you know, next year's discussion, really understanding what's at risk, et cetera, and engage with the residents early on that topic and get some good ideas. And just make sure everybody has kind of a climate 101, what's at risk, what plans are already in place to address it. I just think everybody would like to be better informed. So that's kind of my reasons for running, and look forward to this dialogue tonight. Thank you.
That's fantastic. Jeff, let's hear from you.
My name is Jeff Bodmer Turner. Many of you may know me in a little box on the screen as I am on the select board now and currently the chair. I'm running again to address what I see as some of the most significant challenges that we face in this town, the many significant challenges. We were limited to three. And the three that I see as important challenges that I'd like to be addressing are securing our infrastructure to begin to mitigate or plan to mitigate for local climate change impacts, particularly sea level rise and catastrophic storms. That would include reinforcing or, and most likely relocating, our wastewater treatment plant and identifying the best strategies to preserve Singing Beach. That's not all that's included, but those are two of the significant ones that I see that are on the horizon. Our wastewater treatment plant will be underwater with any significant high tides in another 20 years. And we need to start planning now. The second one is protecting and preserving our drinking water supply. This is something that I've been a longstanding advocate of. And this year, we, I worked with the Board of Selectmen at the time and other boards to re-energize the Water Resources Protection Task Force, which is multi-stakeholder board that is reviewing what is now a 20-year-plus-old water resources protection plan that was done in the '90s and to update it with recommendations that are relevant now, taking a look at what's been done and identifying what needs to be done. I also see as a very important priority finding funding to monitor and mitigate the impact of PFAS in our water supply. PFAS are toxic chemicals, toxic compounds, organic compounds, that don't break down. There are about 3,000 PFAS. And the state of Massachusetts requires monitoring of six of them. And the levels that are being monitored for are so miniscule that one drop of water in, I believe, 20 Olympic swimming pools is the parts per trillion that we have to identify these chemicals in. So it's a very, very important thing to identify. It's a very high bar to be able to adequately address that. The DPW is doing that now. They're monitoring. But we are approaching the threshold where we're going to have to mitigate, which is going to be very expensive. So we need to identify outside sources from the state primarily, perhaps from feds, to build essentially a filtering plant for the Lincoln Street well. The third area that I am concerned about is similar to what Kathy just said about identifying opportunities to increase truly affordable housing, truly affordable housing, not in a 40B formula, per se, but by moving and working with, more closely working with, Affordable Housing Trust and other housing agencies to make adequate progress towards safe harbor. What that means is if the state certifies that we're making adequate progress, which is a half percent increase in affordable housing each year, they'll give us an extra year where we can say no to any 40B that comes to town. That's a path for us to be following and working on. I know very well that the Affordable Housing Trust is working on this, that they have a multi-year plan, that we also have a housing production plan. We'll talk a little bit about that more as we go on. But those three areas, securing infrastructure, protecting and preserving our drinking water, and identifying opportunities to increase truly affordable housing are really dear to me.
Thank you, bud. Thank you. Brian Solacey, you're up next.
Wow. My name is Brian Solacey. I've lived in town for 25, 26 years now. I've lost track the last two years. In that period of time, excuse me, I bet it's son go through the school system. About when he got out of school 17 years ago, I got involved with Parks and Recreation as far as officiating basketball. And what that, the unintended consequences of refereeing your kids was being engaged with every year a new group of people in town that I would not have known had I not gotten involved with that. About 12 years ago, there was a move, we used to have the, as you recall, the Manchester Arts Festival. That was going to, due to a variety of different reasons, that was going to end. So I got involved with a bunch of, you know, handful of concerns, locals, citizens, and we created the Festival by the Sea. And I'm not as engaged as I was before, except for going out and painting the town every Friday before the Festival by the Sea with Lisa Martinez. But with, we started this, Chris Langatiano, Michael Strelor, and myself, Judith Lyspisa. So again, I had nothing, I was not an artist. I was not a retailer. I was not a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I just felt it was important for the town. The, about four or five years ago, four years ago, I got involved with the Manchester Essex Rotary. And here's your shameless plug. Please show up. We have the Kentucky Derby auction on Friday, Saturday, rather. It's one of the big fundraisers for the town and for the scholarship fund. So if you're around, come on around. There was, I responded to an ad in the Cricket four years ago, an opening on the planning board. Met with the Joint Planning Board and Board of Selectmen. The position went to Chris Olney, but I was asked to fill an empty vacancy on the zoning Board of Appeals. So there I am. About, I understand the last two years have been, has been, we've all struggled. There were some decisions that I didn't necessarily agree with. And I've decided, rather than just complain about it, it's time to step up and do something about it. You know, decisions are made by those who show up, these decisions, you people here. And in consultation with former members of the Board of Selectmen, I decided it was my turn. It was my time to step up. The town has done very well for me, and I've decided to, I have the time, I have the energy to give it back. Of the three issues that are most concerned to me right now are obviously the hot buttons, the local dispatch, downtown business, and affordable housing. I think that, I don't know what happened, but it seems that common sense has gone the way of, is almost on the endangered species list. And I just want to bring a common sense approach to everything that we talk about. And we'll touch on those things as we go through.
Yes, we will. That's great. Well, thank you. Good introductions, very thorough. All right, we're going to get off with our questions. The first question is about regional dispatch. Brian, you just brought that up. So regional dispatch is something that the town has been studying for years, years and years. This isn't new. So I'd like to know from each one of you where you land on regional dispatch. This is the effort to move the dispatch services, which are currently housed in the, within the police department, although they service the police department and the fire department, and it's jointly managed by the two chiefs, whether or not this will move to a regional dispatch center in Middleton, a municipal regional dispatch center. That's the question. So let's keep this to two minutes, please. Jeff, let's start with you.
This is an active issue before the Board of Selectmen and has been. We've done three public forum last summer. We've done a public forum in April, and we have a public forum tomorrow night. The question that was asked of us was, where do we stand? Do we support it or don't support it? And up until now, I have not made a public commitment either way, acting in my mentor's footsteps, Mr. Wilson, to try and remain as neutral as possible on issues until we vote on them and lead the board. However, I'm saying, as a candidate tonight, I support the move of Public Safety Dispatch to the regional center. The goal of the regional center, oh, excuse me, the goal of Public Safety Dispatch is to support our professional public safety personnel, police officers and firefighters primarily. And regional service, in terms of what it provides, and I've studied this issue in depth, is a better service for a much better cost. It has a lot of different redundancies, if you will, backups, which are not very well-developed for our particular dispatch service. I think it's important to keep in mind that whoever is doing dispatch, the person that shows up at your door if you dial 911 is somebody that's local, somebody that works for the town. And our responders, our public safety personnel are top-notch. When they show up, they will do the best job to help with whatever the crisis is that you called 911 for. The connection to getting them to your door, the dispatch, is a phone number. And in fact, we know from experience that the regional dispatch has been involved in incidents that have occurred here in Manchester and done a very good job, an excellent job. We had two hikers that were lost in the woods, in the Western Woods, summer before last. And the call went to Essex because they were on their cell phone. It just happened to go towards Essex. It was picked up by Regional Dispatch. They were on it and stayed on it until those people were found. They talked to the people. They had the capacity to stay on the call for a very long period of time. They also brought in other resources. They coordinated and communicated with the command on the ground, which was jointly shared by Chief Fitzgerald and Chief Francis of Essex. It's an example, but it's a very strong example of what can happen under this system. Financially, the regional center is a very straightforward decision. It's much less expensive, much less expensive. And I'm not going to go through the numbers right now. We'll be talking about those in detail tomorrow night. But the numbers are much less expensive. The regional center is a place where they have backup, they have state-of-the-art equipment in place. And what we have is a program in progress. We're building it. It takes time. It takes a lot of money, and we have to continuously build it. Between now and the time that it's built out to provide the same amount of service that the regional center serves, would serve us with, you could be the one making that 911 call.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we have a lot to get to. Brian Solacey, why don't you go next on regional dispatch? Where do you land on the issue?
Well, I've been pretty vocal, and I think we should keep it in-house. I'm sorry, Tom, you okay? I'll try. I do a really good job mumbling, too, so if you stop me. In the last, I've witnessed, I've watched Chief Fitzgerald, when he first started as interim chief, turn a disconnected police force into a community, a serious community policing. Okay? And we hired the chief to do a job. And bottom line is, we should give him the tools. He wants, he wants to keep in-house. I think he deserves all the tools to be successful with that. You know, we opine about the loss of the unique character of Manchester, but yet we're, this is an opportunity to keep everything local. An example might be if someone were to fall and say, hey, and call Regional Dispatch, someone fell in the parking lot at Richdells. Now, I don't expect someone, because there is no Richdell anymore, okay? I don't expect someone in Middleton to know where that is. They're going to spend some time trying to figure out what the address is, okay, before they call Manchester to send someone there. Frankly, I think that anyone locally will know exactly what we're talking about. They're not going to spend whatever time it is to try to understand where that is. If, and I just feel that we should, bottom line is, we've got to give the chief the tools to succeed. And sometimes we can't, we can't look at columns on a spreadsheet. This is a quality of life issue. And I think that's what we pay our taxes for. And I mean, I haven't stuck my finger in the air and tried to come up with what is politically expedient. I've been quite vocal about this from the very beginning.
Great. Thank you. All right, Kathy, I'm going to start calling you Kathy.
Good, thank you. All right, so this is obviously a very emotional topic for the town. A lot of people have a lot of strong opinions in both courts. My view is a little bit different, and I'll tell you how I'm approaching it. I've been pretty vocal on the dispatch public forum calls and the Board of Selectmen meetings on this issue. And one of the reasons for that is I have a lot of experience evaluating and assessing the quality and appropriateness of shared services. I was a strategic executive for the Global Business Services Unit at Raytheon, and our entire job for the $1 billion business was shared services. So I've said yes to some and no to others. What I looked for is, number one, the quality of the service. Number two, are the savings real? And number three is the organization, or in this case, the town, ready for that change. These types of evaluations are always fraught with a lot of different anecdotes, personal experiences. It's, this is very common, the discussion that we're having. So what I like to do is folk, understand the strategy, focus on the data, and what does it tell me? The strategy, I believe, at the state level is if there's a large-scale emergency, they don't want to deal with 351 different dispatch departments. Okay? They want to regionalize so that in the event of a large-scale emergency, they can efficiently, you know, get the resources to where they're needed. Makes sense. But we have more day-to-day needs from an emergency dispatch standpoint. And so what I've been doing is looking at the data. Since the state took over the Middleton Regional Center, I think that was 2019, something like that, there have been metrics published. How well are they performing against those metrics? Are they improving? That's what I've been looking at. So, and I've also talked to both chiefs, and I've talked to members of the police force and the firefighters and EMTs. So I feel comfortable that, looking at all of that data, that the regional option is a safe option. If I call, and I asked the chiefs, if I call 911, is my phone going to get picked up? And is someone going to show up at my house, you know, to deal with my emergency? And I felt comfortable with their responses. They said, yeah, you know, your calls are going to get answered. They're not going to go to voicemail. Don't worry about that. So looking, talking with those folks and looking at the data, I feel the regional center is a safe option. What I still have questions on, and I'll ask more questions tomorrow night, so the board can prepare for that. But I want to understand the savings. I believe they're real. But if we want to move to a regional model, we have to be prepared to implement some policies to ensure that the savings we get upfront are going to be there seven years from now, 10 years from now. You don't want the savings to erode over time based on changes on the select board or changes in the chiefs or the town administrators. You have to put processes in place to keep the savings. So that's what I'll be poking at tomorrow night. And then, you know, I don't want to forget the fact that there is a ballot question out there, that the townspeople ask to have a voice. It's a non-binding ballot question, but it is a point of information that I do think needs to be considered. So where I stand is I am more generally comfortable with shared service models, and I'm trying to see if this will work. I'm not quite there yet, but I expect to have a better sense of that after tomorrow night's public forum.
Great. I mean, it's a big topic. There's a lot there, so. All right, thank you for that. So let's move to a different topic. We just came out of COVID. We're coming out of COVID. I mean, we're not quite there. Just ask Alan Wilson. But I think that we should be thinking about downtown businesses. What do you think about downtown businesses? Our downtown is very vibrant even before COVID. You know, independent retailers struggle and businesses, they struggle with the Amazon effect and with technology. This taps into the idea of community. This taps into, Brian, what you were talking about with the Greater Chamber, Greater Cape Town Chamber of Commerce and the festival, the Arts Festival. So that's my question. What do you think the town can do to be more supportive of downtown businesses? Let's, I'm sorry. Let's start with Kathy Bellata.
Okay, so this is a topic near and dear to my heart. I grew up in a downtown area, in a city close to Boston. And my father, his brother, they're two cousins. My mother and her siblings all owned small businesses within two-block radius of my house. So I grew up in a downtown. And to be honest with you, Manchester's downtown is one of the reasons I chose to live here. My father was very involved in the Chamber of Commerce, and his voice still rings in my ear whenever I travel to another town whose downtown is not as successful as ours. So what I believe we need to do, number one, is not just look at what we can do in the downtown, but be thoughtful about the decisions we're making outside of the downtown. So we're going to talk about the LCD district, you know, in a few minutes, I believe. And I, my first priority is not to try and duplicate Manchester's downtown somewhere else. I love, you know, Linfield Market Street, and I go to Gloucester Crossing all the time. We don't need that here. I really feel strongly about that. I think that would just destroy our downtown. So I, that would be one thing. Number two, I would love to see outdoor dining come back and make it a permanent thing. I think it was highly successful. And I think collaborating with the downtown businesses, we can find a way to make that work. You know, we talk a lot about the impact of parking. Well, let's not forget the boaters. You know, I'm a boater, and I like to hop from harbor to harbor. And, you know, a nice day out for me is I, you know, go out in the boat with my family, and we go to one place, dock the boat, transit docking, eat at a restaurant, do a little shopping, go somewhere else the next weekend. So I think we can do a lot to bring in other visitors to the town in a way that is not, you know, parking is not such a worry bead. And I think the last thing is just talking with the business community. We should be very engaged as a select board to meet regularly with the small business owners in town and just ask them, what do you care about? And listen to what they have to say and work collaboratively. I'm sure they're not shy, and they'll tell us what they need.
That's great. Great answer. Jeff?
The downtown businesses are the heart of our community. And I think it's really important that we do more than give lip service to supporting them. In my time on the select board, I've gotten to know a number of the business owners. I've been in their places of business. I've talked to them. We've dealt with issues throughout COVID, which included boosting the restaurants by giving an opportunity for outdoor dining. That outdoor dining initiative was implemented because the restaurants initially in COVID, when they could open, were limited to 50% occupancy. That wasn't enough to keep their restaurants alive. And so the outdoor dining initiative was brought in to expand the footprint of dining available to them. Throughout the time that we had outdoor dining, we had a lot of concerns from the retail sector of our businesses downtown. They really felt like they wanted to support the restaurants, but they also didn't want to have the limited parking that we have in the downtown area taken away. To implement downtown, to implement outdoor dining downtown on a permanent basis would require more than putting up bunches of jersey barriers and decorating them. It would require really considering how that could be safely done and how it could be done in such a way that it did not compromise the retail businesses that make up more than 50% of our downtown. So in that regard, So in that regard, I'm very much in support of the parking study that's beginning now. There's going to be a survey of downtown businesses and downtown residents about parking in the area. I like the way Laura's thinking about it, that there's got to be ways of bringing people into our community and into our downtown without having them bring a car with them. And we certainly know that by the immigration of all the commuter rail people who come to go to the beach in the summertime. And that's been a very important and significant aspect of the vitality of our downtown in the summer season. The Board of Selectmen, this past Monday night, heard a presentation from our harbor master about extending the dock space at Reed Park to go all the way down along railroad tracks to the drawbridge, and increasing the boating hookups that were available, and also increasing the amenities, including flushouts for boats, which Manchester Marine is only going to do for their customers in the future. So that's an idea that I think is a really important idea and a very positive idea. Last year, once we got the dock in place at Reed Park with very limited amenities, the town took in $50,000 worth of revenue. The projected revenue for this longer dock would be $150,000 to $200,000. So we both have revenue for the harbor and an increase in traffic to the downtown. We need to come up with creative solutions like that, and not just rely on parking, but we also need to come up with better parking solutions. So I'm very much in support of the parking study. I'm also in support of the work that's been done in the local rapid recovery program using ARPA funds to make a consistent wayfinding, a way to find your way around, if you're unfamiliar with our town, that's beautiful and that is easily recognizable. It's all-star.
Great. Thank you. All right, Brian, let's hear from you.
I agree. I think that I've been, again, a vocal proponent of outdoor dining since last year when I spoke in front of the Board of Selectmen in favor of it when it was rejected, as it were. I mean, they allowed sidewalk, they said sidewalk dining, but you had to cut occupancy in half. I believe that, just like other communities, it lends a vibrancy to our town that doesn't exist. No one gets up in the morning and says, in wallfame, and says, hey, let's go to Manchester for dining and shopping. Manchester's a town you drive through to get to somewhere else. Okay? And if there's anything that can create some kind of excitement and vitality of the town, because we all know when they're driving up 127, the traffic backs up. So if we can give a reason for them to stop, they're going to stop, they're going to dine, they're going to shop. To me, it seems like to make perfect sense, and I think we have to make a commitment to the restaurants so that they do invest, and something doesn't look like East Berlin as far as the Jersey barriers go. The parking is an issue, of course, but we're looking at, well, four to five or six parking spots we're going to lose. I would advocate extending parking back down Beet Street like we had a couple of years ago, picking up those spots. Hey, I can save $20,000 by telling you what a downtown parking study is going to tell you. Extend parking down Beet Street. Let's improve the signage from the new path behind Town Hall to Beet Street. I'm telling you, an orange traffic cone and a laminated sign doesn't say welcome. Let's improve the signage there. Let's make it look like we mean it. Okay? Up on Central Street, let's paint some parking spots. You've got one person, and you can mess up all of the parking when they just park there. There seem to be some common sense approaches to doing this, and then this much to some chagrin to some of the boaters out there. I would look at, I would consider looking at maybe eliminating one or two or three resident-only parking spots at Masco. Again, that's controversial, but I think it's worth considering. I think it's very important that we support the downtown businesses. And what Kathy said, yes. When we discussed LCD, I want to see synergy. I don't want to see businesses competing against each other. There's got to be some synergy between the two. And again, even in good times, the downtown businesses struggle. So let's not hamstring them with undue mandates, as it were. And that's it.
Great. So we've heard a lot about parking and boating and Bayonne's project with the harbor with parking. It's been very successful. Okay, let's pivot now to what we've been talking about. You brought this up, Kathy, and Brian, you just talked about this. Let's talk about the limited commercial district. You're aware that, of course, that the limited commercial district played an important, central, significant role in the master plan. What is your vision for the development of the LCD? Let's start with you, Jeff.
I think that the LCD has been something that has been imagined, reimagined, and reimagined It's got parallels with other longstanding development issues in our town. My vision in terms of the LCD is to encourage low-impact commercial development, similar to the project that cell signaling is proposing. And I say low-impact because it's commercial. It doesn't involve the rest of our town in the sense of having traffic going through town substantially. People get in and out on 128. It will increase people going into downtown to find food, hunters and gatherers. And I think that the type of impacts to the town are primarily around water and sewer. And the projected impacts for those are very reasonable compared to other forms of development. That's one type of development that we're already moving in the direction of, and I think it's a very positive development. Cell signaling's building, when they presented to the planning board and then to the Board of Selectmen at the time, is about 100,000 square feet, I believe. And unlike other types of development, this type of specialized bio lab is about 1,000 square foot to develop. It's very specialized, and it's expensive to build, which gives us a property that has a very high value and a great impact on our tax roll. So that's the kind of development that I'd like to see going forward. There's other possible high-tech users who would have to be vetted, and that's another area that we could move into. And then there was a proposal about building long-term care facilities in the district. That has its ups and downs, but it has some positives in terms of low impact on our schools in a residential type of project. Healthcare in general is a positive for us in that area. So all those are possibilities, and I would like to see us thinking in terms of the impact on the town and the increase in the tax base. That's been the whole issue around the LCD ever since it was first conceived, was finding ways to take the burden off of property taxpayers. People own property tax bills. Nasty.
Okay, so low-impact, you like technology, but, you know, commercial, low-impact on water and sewer, low-impact on the schools. Okay, Brian, let's go to you next. What's your vision for development in the LCD?
First of all, I want to thank the voters of Manchester for approving the changes in the LCD. I see, not unlike a shopping mall, I see cell signaling as an anchor to further development at the LCD. And I think ancillary businesses that would support a business like cell signaling, it could be R&amp;D, it could be, as Jeffrey points out, high-tech, or an incubator lab space. I think we want to stay away from manufacturing, per se, but we're looking for something that will be low-impact on the infrastructure of the town. And I think that with cell signaling coming in, I think the town should be marketing itself. I think we should be out looking for who we want to bring into the town. And I think a big selling point would be having cell signaling as the jewel of this area. And I think that we should be just proactive, as opposed to ducking and hoping somebody, who's going to come in or worrying about who's going to come in. We should go find them. I know other towns and cities do that, and I don't see why we can't do it ourselves. That's it.
The town went through a recon. Re-grant with a consultant, and two of the ideas have come up, and one of them was that, and I believe the town is going to pursue this, is marketing the town, along with Essex. And then the other one is signage downtown. So both of those things have been mentioned tonight. Okay, Kathy, so let's hear.
Yeah, I think I'm in violent agreement with everything that's been said. I mean, I'll keep it short. I think we're all agreeing that we want the LCD to be an asset and an opportunity for the town, not a drain on the town. The only other thing I'll add is, you know, I know at one point there was a thought that perhaps some part of that LCD could be used for athletic fields, and we're continuing to hear a cry for help, I think, from the school community around that. So if there's a way we can kind of squeeze in something for the kids and ask the new corporate tenants who might find a home in LCD to kind of help out the community, I'd be okay with that, too.
I think a lot of people agree with you. Okay, so zoning has become a central, wide-spanning theme for all communities, actually, on Cape Town and throughout Massachusetts. So we're going to talk about zoning and zoning-related things pivoting off of the LCD conversation. So now here's one that we want to be specific on. This has to do with the planning board. You're aware that the planning board's proposal is to revise some of the zoning regulations. Are there specific changes that you would like to see? So let's start with you, Kathy.
Okay. So first of all, I have dialed into a lot of the planning board meetings, and I've got to give them a shout out. I think we're going to see, you know, two types of zoning changes requested at the upcoming town meeting, the town meeting in June. There are two types. So one is administrative, cleaning up of the language, making the zoning bylaws easier to understand so that people don't make mistakes, make it easy for people to do the right thing. I'm a big fan of that. It's not glamorous work. It's tedious, and kudos for them for taking it on. So that's one type of change that we'll see, and I welcome that. The other type is, you know, the land use changes. How do we want the land use to change, or do we? And to be honest with you, I don't want to get too far ahead of their process. You know, I just listened into the meeting just the other night, and there's a lot of technical detail and rationale for why they're going to present, what they're going to present. We can all read what they're going to present and form an opinion, but to listen in on those discussions and the debates they've had on every single word, I don't want to get ahead of that process. I don't think it's fair to them. So I want to attend the public forum on, I think it's election night, we're having the public forum on these issues, where they will tell, I hope, their story. Here's the comprehensive look, what I'd like to hear, is here's a comprehensive look of all of the zoning changes we're going to put in front of you on June 11th. Here's what they all mean in an integrated, easy-to-understand language. That's what I'd like to hear and see. And I want pictures. This town loves prose, lots and lots of prose. And there's some wonderful writers, but I'm a visual learner. I need pictures. I want to see a map, and I want to see the flood zones outlined, and I want to see the potential zoning changes visually, how they're envisioning the requested changes to Manchester. So that's really what I'm looking for. I don't want to see individual piecemeal discussions until we talk about the big picture. And then, let's get into the details and the language. But I'm a big-picture person. Start with the strategy and the approach, and show everything integrated together, and then let's talk the details. And then what I'll be looking for specifically is maintaining our small-town feel. Are the proposed changes going to help us with our affordable housing dilemma? Are they truly going to add some well-integrated options for multifamily housing in an appropriate scale for different parts of the town? So that's what I'll be looking for.
You just said a lot. Okay, Jeff, specifics.
Haven't I been specific enough? I think that, I echo what Kathy said about the planning board. They have worked incredibly hard, and it's not been just a couple of months, it's not been a year, it's been several years, to bring to town meeting the changes that they're going to be bringing. The hard part is, the complexity of what they've done is hard to communicate in a simple, simple presentation. There are lots of different aspects to the recertification, and I'm not going to even begin to try to address them all, even a few of them. There's some that I think make very good sense, common sense, like moving the curb cuts out from under the planning board. They shouldn't be dealing with that. They've chosen to recommend that it goes to general bylaw and that DPW takes over the approvals. That's a really, a good move. There are other moves that are going to be moved into the general bylaw as well, junk cars and stormwater control and development. I think that those recommendations are very positive. There are other large features of development that will be addressed in these changes, along with, as Kathy mentioned, the simplification of language, which we all know, anybody who's read a bylaw knows, you need. So there's two that I'd like to mention, and they're both probably flashpoints. One is cluster zoning, which is something that would apply to five-acre parcels. The thing I like about the way that this proposal is constructed is that there are incremental bonuses within it for creating housing that has, for instance, affordable units. If there's one affordable unit, there's a 10% increase in the number of units that you can put on the property. Senior housing. If it's dedicated senior housing, there's an increase of 10% that can be done on the property. And significant amenities to the town. God, I'm so impressed that they were able to identify and define what significant amenities are, one of which is the preservation of land outside the actual development, making donations to create land that's preserved outside of the development. That's not all there is to cluster zoning. And if you're worried about zoning density, keep in mind, we have some places in town that have high-density zoning, excuse me, have high-density housing, for instance, like the 40B project that went in on Summer Street in the downtown. The other area-- The other area, and I don't want to get way down in the weeds on this, is our ADUs, accessory dwelling units. And this is an area where it's like the Wild West in Manchester. There are very few, if any, rules for these units, and there are a lot of them that have been put in, and 20 years ago, they don't come in grandfathered. They have to apply, the owners of those properties have to apply and show that they conform to the new structure that the planning board has developed for what constitutes an accessory dwelling unit. No more than 900 square feet, a need for a double lot to start with, that the property is owner-occupied, that the ADU is attached to the house, so it's not over on the far end of the yard, or, in my case, my garage, I couldn't do an ADU in my garage without a special permit. All these things could happen, but they have to go through a special permit process for those things to happen. So there's been some discussion about, oh, God, it's by right, and people are going to come running in, and they're going to, you know, do all kinds of things by right and ignore their neighbors. If you look carefully at it, they've done a really good job of defining the limits of what can happen without a special permit. It will still be site review, but no special permit. So I think that the cluster zoning issues, the ADUs, and the pulling out the things that don't belong in the law and simplifying the language, it's been a great job.
Great. Thank you. Okay, Brian.
What was the question?
Do you need a reminder?
No, I'm looking at right here, it says it right there. As far as the plan, I will echo what's been said prior to this, is that cleaning up the language, being on the zoning board, I still need some clean language to understand what's going on. I am concerned, and I think we should slow things down and to see what comes out of all the hard work the planning board has done. The, I'm concerned, we're, this town is, what, 80% non-conforming, okay? So to start granting by right is a concern. I think that we do have a process in place as far as special permits, although I will tell you this, I would love to get rid of swimming pools out of the zoning boards as far as, I'd like to see swimming pools by, there you go, there's your specific, I'm tired of looking at swimming pools. But I think we have to, we don't have, we shouldn't look at this as a cookie cutter. I mean, the heater neighborhoods are very dense with ADUs, as Jeffrey pointed out, parking is an issue, and we have to just carefully, carefully look at this, as opposed to just, and I think that oversight, we do have the zoning boards there, I'd still like to see. The butters have some rights over the properties that they live in as well. So I just want to say, let's stay slow, let's see where it goes, and the, we'll just take it one step at a time, but as far as cleaning up the language, yes, and I'd like to see where they come out with before the next town meeting, and we'll pull it apart and see what we have.
Great. We've heard clustered zoning, we've heard, or a clustered approach to planning, let's call it that. We've heard a lot about ADUs, accessory dwelling units, which I think, and I'm going out on a limb here, I hope I'm not wrong, I think you, today, accessory dwelling units, you have to apply, it's a special permit process, and you have to have a double lot first, right? So it's very restrictive. So I know what you were talking about.
One and two.
Yeah, so.
They have to be done by.
Yes, so they all have to be done by special permit, all of them, currently, yes. So it is restrictive, and it isn't sort of, like, the use of Wild West has an implication that everybody's doing it, and everybody's doing it illegally. Anyway, so, okay, gotcha, just, yes. Okay, so I want to be respectful of time, of the people's time who are in this room, right? So I'd like to kind of go through the next thing. What I'd like to do is go through something that is kind of an exercise in two things. Number one, it's an exercise in sort of a quick-fire response, sort of a yes-or-no answer, that gets to specifics about things that are really on our plates right now. All of them have to do with zoning and approaches and things like that. And then you can have supportive things to, you know, to support your answer, but please try to keep it brief, and we can open it up to everybody else right after that. And then the second thing is, I thought it might be fun to do something that was the opposite of NIMBY, not in my backyard, which is a phrase everybody should be familiar with, and if you're not, please familiarize yourself with it. We want to go through something called YIMBY, yes in my backyard. So, so let's talk about the plans that are going on. We have 40A, we have 40B, we have the Manchester Affordable Housing Trust Plan, which Jeff, you referred to. So let's start with something that stems off of the Affordable Housing Trust Plan. So would you support renovations and the expansion of the public housing properties at Newport Park, the Plains, and Loading Place Road? Yes or no? Jeff Bodmer Turner.
Absolutely. The plan is very good. It's absolutely necessary because those units are a mess. They really need to be upgraded and updated.
Great, so that's fantastic. FYI, that's the improvement, the rehab of the existing units at all of those places, and they are all affordable, low-income subsidized housing, and it would be adding more to pay for it. So that's the rough plan. So Catherine.
Ditto.
Okay, I love it. Brian?
Yes.
Oh, I love this, this is fantastic. Okay, so related to that, would you support the development of the DPW site on Pleasant Street? Because that's in the plan, and if so, would you, how, and this does require, you know, specifics. Would you want it to be mixed-use? Would you want it to be totally low-income? Would you want it to be affordable, which is in between market rate and low-income? So, Brian?
Yes, to a certain extent, okay. I wouldn't want to make it all low-income, again, the ghetto mentality that exists when you cluster everything like that. I think we, the town really needs attainable housing, I like to call it attainable housing, where my kid can come in and stay and live here. I think that we, there are other options in town that we have to explore as well, okay? The concerns I have with, I don't know how dense we can build, there's six acres there, I don't know how much is wetlands, I don't know how much is dirty, but it's all going to funnel out into Pleasant Street. So we have to be mindful of that as well. So the short answer is yes, with conditions.
And you mean by Pleasant Street, meaning that it's already dense?
Well, yeah, I mean, anyone who drives down Pleasant Street.
Well, we did mention the Plains, and we did.
Okay. My point is, if we're going to add 40, 30 or 40, however, you, I mean, 60, six acres can support an ex-urban environment, they can do up to 18 acres, 18 units per acre, according to the state. Of course, that's in a high-rise or mid-rise, that's not going to happen there. But even if you're talking 30, 20 or 30 units on that site, which allows for some cluster development, that's 30 cars trying to, or trying to file out onto, as I see it, the only access into the site would be Pleasant Street. And that, and Pleasant Street's already too dense in that regard.
Okay. I'll move on to something that addresses the 40A, which is the so-called MBTA mandate from the state.
I didn't get an opportunity to.
Oh, oh my goodness, I'm so sorry, Kathy. I was hearing ditto. Yes, please.
So your question was on the DPW.
The DPW site on Pleasant Street.
Yes, if appropriately scaled for the site. I live on Lower Pine, I think we have a wonderful mix of multifamily housing with single-family housing, we, it's right near the Newport Park as well, and you have a wide variety of housing there. I think it's extreme, I'm biased, I think it's extremely well-done. We don't have parking issues on the street because of the way they were designed. So I would absolutely, I like the idea of using existing town land and existing town property to solve existing town problems.
I love it. Okay, I apologize.
That's okay.
So the 40A, which we're moving on to, is the MBTA district that's causing a lot of confusion, but we're sort of getting through it, and we have a lot of time to get through it, frankly. We have until the end of 2023 to have a plan, I believe, filed. So that is the state's mandate and its attempt to address the wide-ranging problem of a lack of housing diversity. And housing diversity means diversity of different formats, small, large, and then, yes, affordable and not affordable. So our housing production plan shows that Manchester is extremely anemic in those areas. So let's talk 40A. Do you, okay, I'm going to just ask the question. There's been initial talk and pushback on the 40A legislation, and it requires multifamily housing near a train station. How would you address the issue? Kathy, I'd like to start with you.
Thank you. So I was, I asked a few questions at the 40A forum that was held a few weeks back. I don't think anybody likes the current draft language, I haven't met a single person in town who does. And the main concern I voiced at the time was, I didn't want this 40A to be a distraction. We have some very clear housing issues, getting to that 10% affordable housing inventory, the multifamily housing. I don't want this to be a distraction, and that's my concern. This is the time to influence the state, to recognize the unique geographical configuration and challenges of coastal communities like Manchester. I know some people just want to say no and walk away, but that would inhibit our ability to influence and negotiate the state. And if you're a small town, if you're anybody, you never want to give up your ability to influence and negotiate. So now is the time to influence the state, negotiate as best we can in concert with other communities, so that 40A does not stand in the way of what we need to do. But when that final language comes out, if we don't like it, I would say goodbye to the money and try and figure out another way to fund what we need to fund. I just feel we need to enact zoning based on what we want.
Great. Jeff?
This is a really complicated issue to answer in just a couple of minutes, and there are some deadlines. We've already met one of those deadlines. And what's at stake is high stakes. Grant money from the state of Massachusetts, grant money that has supported all of the INI work on our sewer system to decrease inflow into the sewers and tax our water treatment plant. That's the kind of money that we're talking about. We're talking about money for dredging the harbor, we're talking about money for projects like the Culvert Project. There's significant projects in this town that are supported by state grants, and this 40A has been tied to being able to participate in those grant processes. You can wring your hands, you can jump up and down, but that's the way the law has been written, and right now, we don't have any say over anything except what Kathy mentioned, which are the regulations. And we worked really hard to come up with a letter from the Select Board to the state of Massachusetts, to DHCD, to address the many deficiencies in the regulations. The most significant one that I can mention is that the way that the state has approached this is 15% or a minimum of 750 new units, 15% of your current housing stock, or a minimum of 750 units. 750 units is about 28%, I believe, of our existing housing. It's way more than they're requiring the city of Boston or the city of Salem to do. And so we very much put out the point that we want to see a minimum of 15%, a maximum of 15%, period. And that would be 375 units. That's still a lot. There are issues that we face as a coastal community that are very different than other communities that are along the MBTA. There are a lot of communities that face these issues that are along the MBTA, marshlands, et cetera. But our coastal community in our district that this housing would go under in the half-mile radius around the train station is subject to both sea level rise and catastrophic storms. That's a very significant issue for this town that's not present in Hamilton, for instance. When the water gets to Hamilton, we don't have a problem here, we're gone. So.
Thank you. All right, Brian, you'll finish it up.
Wow, I appreciate it. I think that a regional approach is what we need up here. Between, I really like what Mayor Verga had to say up in Gloucester, what Rockport had, and I think that we should have got together with our Cape Anne partners and come up with a regional discussion as to how this is going to go. There's a lot of work to be done with this. And I'm convinced that from everything I've read, every community along the MBT is having issues with this, so there's, there's a lot of work for the state to do. I think that we should be more, and as Kathy pointed out, I think we should be more concerned about where the money goes if we're unable to comply, not unwilling, but unable to comply. You know, as pointed out, you know, a half-mile around the train station, well, we're losing 20, 30% of that with ocean and town land, okay? My concern on a grander scale is where 40A is going to take us in 10, 15 years. I mean, when 40B was first envisioned, I'm sure, it wasn't, it was, it was to allow developers and towns to work cooperatively to get around some tight zoning issues, okay? I don't think that anyone ever saw 20 years, 30 years later, 40 years later, that a developer can use that to, as far as getting around environmental issues. And I think that 40A has the ability, or a developer's going to come around and find his workarounds on that in a couple of years, or 20 years, 30 years. But for right now, I think that we have to work with our state delegation and our community partners up and down the train here, and work out, a cookie cutter doesn't work, and I think that that's the, that's the end of it. Yes, I'm done.
So you agree, maybe with Kathy, that says negotiate, but be ready to leave the money behind?
No, I would fight for that money. I would fight for that money, okay?
Well, I would agree with that.
Yeah, you know, no, that's my, you know, if we're paying into it as taxpayers, don't hold it as a club over my head, okay? It's rightfully mine, and I would fight tooth and nail for that money.
There you go.
Okay, that was great. Well, thank you very much for this. I want to, we're right on time now, which is good. I would like to, I was going to ask everyone to kind of summarize themselves. I think what I think I'd rather do is just quickly ask, is there anything that I, we didn't talk about that you'd like to say before we kind of move to people asking questions, if they want to?
Yeah, just quickly, I mean, we really didn't talk too much about the schools, MERSD, and that's the biggest part of the budget. So I just, I just want to go on record, I'm a big supporter of education, have a lot of teachers in my family, my mother was a music teacher, a piano teacher, and when I start to see the cuts in the school budget around languages, discussion of music programs being fee-based, that raises concern for me. I'm a big believer that music, arts, vocational studies, sports, they are not extracurricular activities. activities, they are part of a well-rounded education. And I believe the Select Board has a role to play to partner with Essex and the school district to do whatever we can with the noneducational expenses to relieve their burden. So we all have facilities, we all have land, we have utilities contracts, we have, you know, there's buildings, there's lots of different commonalities we have amongst the towns and the school district. If there's a way to collaborate on some of these contracts or noneducational-type expenses, the more we can do that, the more that the dollars allocated to the schools can be devoted to the people and the programs.
Right. We actually did have a question about the school district, but because of time, I sort of skipped over it. Jeff?
I also wanted to comment on the school district. There's some very significant structural problems budget-wise with the Manchester-Essays Regional School District. And some of them are beyond the scope of any short discussion, but there's been an increase in cost in moderate and more significant special needs, a very high increase in cost. Programs can cost as much as hundreds of thousands of dollars a year for one student, and they're mandated by the state to be done. The school's done a great job trying to address those and bring in-house moderate special needs, and that reduces costs significantly. I'm with Kathy, I'm, you know, I worked for the elementary school in Essex as part of the district as a teacher, as a technology integration specialist for 20 years. And my whole family is full of teachers. And I think that, I think that these activities that she mentioned are not extracurricular, they need to be supported. And we need to address the structural problems in this budget, where costs are increasing, population's dropping, and our partner is in trouble. Because there's been a shift in the population within the schools, where Essex students are making up a larger percentage of the students in the school system, and as a result, Essex is paying a lot more than we are, and we're paying less. Now, that may seem like a really good deal. We paid a lot more previously when we had more students, but structurally, it's a huge issue. And caused a lot of concern in the Essex Town Meeting that was held last Monday night. Thankfully, the school budget passed there, and it passed by the two-thirds vote that they needed to use a special stabilization fund that they brought in. But we need to address the rolling expenses that keep increasing and that are not being increased frivolously.
And by the way, we will have a forum with the school committee candidates, that's the other contested race. Five people are running in Manchester for two slots, so it's going to be a lot, a lot to talk about. And yes, that Essex Town Meeting was quite a meeting.
You think you've got an unmovin' bunch to make.
Yeah, exactly. Brian, anything we missed?
No, I think that, I'm going to agree with Kathy. I think that the fact, I understand that we had three kids, three graduates going to Berkeley this year, okay? That's a tribute to the fine arts here in town, okay? I applaud the town for supporting the Essex Tech. I think that that's a gem that I wish was available to my son 17 years ago, all right? We've, you know, fortunately, we've changed the perception of vocational training. When I was going to school, and it was expected I was going to college, I expected my kids go to college, and when my son didn't go, I was devastated, okay? Had, we had brought up the value of vocational training, he would have had started on anyone else. So I think that as a board, we can, we can work with the board, the school board to try to identify funding opportunities, STEM, the science and technology, but in as much as, if I, if I knew more about it, I'd be running for school, the school committee, so. But I would work cooperatively to try to help, you know, and we have to invest in the infrastructure, we have to invest in the buildings themselves, but I think a lot of, most of the money should be going to the students and not to the facilities. But we have to maintain the facilities, so we're not looking at replacing them every 20 or 30 years.
Great. Well, thank you all three of you for doing this, this is fantastic. The election, just so everyone remembers, it's Tuesday, May the 17th. I believe you have, and I have to check my notes, you have until the 16th at noon sharp to get to Diane Buco's office if you're doing absentee ballot. But that's fantastic, and thanks all three of you for doing this. Now, I'd love to know if anybody has any questions. It's okay if you don't, but.
There you go.
Jim?
Hi, my name is Jim Starkey. I have a question, I'd like to direct this to the two candidates who suggested that stonewalling 40A was a possibility. Our, Manchester Harbor is not a natural harbor. It's a natural mud flat. In 1900, it was a mud flat with a little tiny stream running through it at low tide. It needs dredging, it needs regular dredging to make it usable for boats. It is very rapidly filled in, it's way, way over the time that it should have been dredged. We have an upcoming dredging, but one of the victims of 40A will be grants for that, and there's probably about a three-and-a-half million dollar shortfall in what can be paid for dredging. How, if you decide to stonewall 40A, do you propose to deal with the harbor? Are you going to write it off, or are you going to suggest that maybe the town pay for it?
I'd like to take that.
Well, look, I think everything that's in front of us is choices, right? And I think it's very important, as I mentioned earlier, not to just look at one issue, we need to start bringing the conversation up a level. So to your point, if we don't get that $3 million for dredging the harbor, and as, you know, Brian said, we should fight for it, right? But if we don't get it, where else would we, would we cut? You can have the exact same conversation about dispatch, okay? If we choose to keep it internal, okay, and spend that extra money, that means we're going to have less money to spend on something else. So just to answer your question, I don't have a specific answer for you today, but I think what's required is doing our budget planning a little bit differently. And, and that means involving the town early at the high level, because a lot of times, by the time townspeople see the nuts and bolts, we're at town meeting and being asked for a vote, people don't actually have a lot of time to sit in on every single finance commit. I have a lot more time because I'm retired, but, you know, you've got a lot of busy people in this town, and we have to find a way to communicate more effectively to and listen to the residents. To me, that's one of our biggest challenges. We have all these complex issues, and we are struggling to communicate. But ultimately, it'll be choices, and when we have, if we have to make that choice, the answer is going to depend, what else are we looking at for expenses for those ongoing years?
I think that's it. Any other questions? Oh, Eli.
Paul.
Oh, I think you have to come up.
I've got a ton of questions, but, and if nobody else has questions, I'll ask them all, but let's start with this one, we'll go back to the YIMBY thing. So as far as the Pleasant Street DPW site is concerned, one of the key aspects to the plan that was put forth by the Affordable Housing Trust and was that the existing facilities at Newport and, now the names are all gone. Thank you, Plains, et cetera. Are all places where they want to expand, expand at, for elderly housing and at a rate that's not going to provide a big return to our developer. And developers are not going to jump at an operation like that unless there's a carrot for them, and the DPW yard project is intended to be that. So the housing there that was intended to be part of that plan, a significant amount of that needs to be market-rate housing. And the question that was asked of you before was, would you support it if a, if a significant amount of it was a low-income housing? And I want to flip that around and say, would you still support it if, in order to get those other things, we had to put in a significant amount of market-rate housing in the Pleasant Street DPW site? So that's a question for all of you, and you can just go down and say yes, no, or what.
So yes, if, I just want us to remember, and this is the big picture again, okay? Every time we add more market-rate housing, it makes it difficult to get to safe harbor and the 10% of affordable housing. So that's why it's so important not to look at each one of these projects separately, as you're alluding to. We've got to have the whole comprehensive plan, so the answer would be maybe, okay, if the math works out and we can still have a solid plan to get to the 10% of affordable housing. I just feel we have to look at it holistically.
I would absolutely support the plan as put forth by Affordable Housing Trust, and that plan was that I think the entire area would be market-rate housing. If there was any modification to that plan, I wouldn't consider any more than 10%, because if you take 10%, that's what the adjustment to the SHI would be if you bring in new units.
I think the easy answer is yes, and we'll do it as a 40B. Okay? Do it as a 40B, find a developer, we'll do it as a 40B. All the units will be counted as, to address Kathy's concern, if it's a 40B and we do affordable units, all the units as a rental will count towards the inventory. So yes, we have to be creative, and I think that there are enough friendly developers out there who would use that to our advantage.
Okay. I'll hand over, and then I'll come back.
You have to come up.
Thank you. Hi, Mary Foley, a follow-up to Eli's question. So to kind of bring that DPW site up to a bit higher level and look at more things, so to move the current DPW site would cost upwards of 20-plus million dollars to residents. That was the number I was given from the town administrator. Do you still look at that as a, as a plausible, feasible move to get 40 to 50 market-rate housing in there and to double the affordable housing sites at the Plains and Newport Park? Thank you.
You're asking specifically about the DPW site, the 20 million.
Yeah, just, you know, if we're, if.
Honestly, I would poke real hard at that estimate.
If we're, if we're looking at the jigsaw puzzle, does that make sense? And I've also heard that we would, there's a potential to declare that land, surplus land, so we would lose the revenue from the sale of that land. Just curious.
I, I do not feel that I have enough details in front of me to either support or not support that. I, 20 million sounds a little off to me, and I say that as someone who lived in another town, and we had the exact same problem, had a DPW site downtown, and we had to move it, and, you know, then you figure out what to do with the land. So once again, I just want to look at all of the moving parts and pieces before I answer that question, yeah.
I think the $20 million number is to build a new DPW facility, not to just move DPW out of that area. And I think it could be moved out of that area for a lot less in terms of the functions that are in the Pleasant Street yard. So I, I, as Kathy said, poke the number. I poke that pretty hard because I don't believe the 20 million is the amount to move the DPW functions that are Pleasant Street to the Compost Site or wherever else we would move them.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Okay. I think that was fantastic. Thank you so much. So thanks to everybody for doing this, this was lovely. And thank you. That was great, that was great.